I'd like to call this meeting in the Big Wall and Board of Education to order with the Pledge of Allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jeremy, if you can call it over, please.
Mr. Crowe.
Here.
Mrs. Dorsh.
Here.
Mrs. Lee.
Here.
Mr. Fuji.
Right.
Uh, Mr. Schneider.
Here.
And Mr. Ross.
Here.
Item five is, uh, recommended the board approve the October twenty fifteen, tw- fifteenth, twenty twenty minutes. Let me try this in English this time. It's recommended the board approve the minutes with the October fifteen, twenty twenty board meeting. Can I have a motion, please?
So I'm gonna.
Thank you, Steve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions or comments on the minutes? Jeremy, when you're ready.
Mr. Fuji.
Yes.
Mrs. Lee.
Yes.
Mr. Crowe.
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh.
Yes.
Mr. Schneider.
Yes.
And Mr. Ross.
Yes.
All right, things is to item six and the super judge.
Thank you. Well, starting with the topic we seem to talk about a lot these days, COVID nineteen update, um, just wanted to let you know that we have had a total of twenty cases so far, that includes students and staff and our in-person students as well as our students in the virtual learning program in that network. Uh, Megan Truax, our district nurse, has continued to do a great job tracking all of that. I will tell you, and I know this is out in our work correspondence, the health department is very behind on keeping up with contact tracing. I think I've shared before, but I have a weekly meeting with all the county superintendents and all of the county, uh, nurse leads at the different districts and health department. And so they have continued to try to implement some processes to help speed that up, um, a couple of which for self-reporting, I think we're going to roll out to the community soon. Uh, trying to do what they can on their end, quite frankly, I don't think they have the, the staffing to keep up with it. So sometimes you, um, may know somebody, or though I know this number, please, or whatever, but, um, we haven't gotten this confirmed yet, so maybe that's typically if she knows about it, ask them to stay home and pull it somewhere from the health department. So. Just wanting to give that update. Also, um, we talked a lot about if they're spreading in schools, that's a topic we talk about every week. And I can tell you that our health department, as well as, um, area health departments, even some that have recommended, um, you know, Franklin County with Purple today. You may have seen yesterday, uh, Franklin County, Columbus recommended, um, a, a stay-at-home act or advisory. And the cancellation of extracurriculars in Franklin County. Uh, I know there is going to be an OCC meeting about that, so more information for you soon. But our health department, as well as ours, has said, we're not really seeing this spread in schools. And the way to measure that is, yes, we've had people that have had to quarantine, but are a lot quarantined and are developing COVID nineteen. And they're not seeing that. There's usually a link to, these kids were at a slumber party together, or, you know, these kids were helping out at this location at a party together, or whatever. So they're not seeing a huge nexus with the contacts and, and the folks that have been diagnosed. So I wanted to share that. That is something we watch very closely. I can tell you that there are a couple of schools in the county, um, that are private schools that are not requiring that. And they have had higher numbers and higher spread in their schools, but they have not seen, uh, significant spread in the four county schools or center. So I wanted to share that. I'll continue to keep you informed. If that changes, I would obviously, um, want to talk to the board immediately so we can look at different options. But in the meantime, a big thank you to our students, to our staff members, uh, to our parents, community for following our protocols. I know people are getting tired and, you know, obviously, now the high schools are a lot of kids are, you know, it gets, gets tiring to wear these, but we're just trying to really remind people to, please make sure you're wearing them correctly, keep them on, um, because it's getting into school. And so again, I just really appreciate everyone helping with that. And, um, hopefully we'll have more information on the sports front with the rest of the league, uh, later this week. Any questions on that?
Has there been any thought? I see that Delaware is going to distance from Thanksgiving to after Christmas with the holidays. The, if there, if the kids are going in school, then they can't really quarantine if, for s- Christmas, basically. I mean, these are the two more family-oriented holidays.
Well, I know the discussion we had on our pandemic response committee was a concern of when parents have to work and then not to get their daycare. So certainly over the holidays, um, you know, if the family wanted to go strongly, wanted to make those arrangements, I think we would work with them. But as long as parents are mostly having to report for work, we don't want to make that mandatory for all kids. Because then we would be in that situation where they know concern at committee, which was, then the kids are in daycare. So now we're exposed to different cohorts and families are having this scramble to find daycare that could cost them money, et cetera. So that's my personal opinion, certainly as Board of Education, if you also differently. Um, but that's what our team has talked about based on the discussions that we've had since the summer.
I think comments that I've seen in regard to that, Doug, just this last week, in a number of Facebook things that have popped up, have been that families have indicated that they're glad the kids are in school and staying in school because they quite frankly don't know what they would do for the childcare, especially if it's a last-minute decision. I know when Oland TNG decided kind of to drop those two days, there were a lot of families who were like, what do I do now? And, I mean, I think that we, we've made the plan that we're in school, and I feel like as long as we can keep these kids in school and I think we move forward, that what we're doing has worked so far.
And I do know, like, Oland TNG, their decision was based on lack of subs those two days, as well as the typical, um, low turnout at school, that typically people might take those extra couple of days. Um, Delaware, we may have heard this photo to take others, as I mentioned. And so we are hopeful, because our biggest issue, as I've said a couple of times, has been substitutes in all areas. So not just teaching classroom substitutes, but all the way throughout the school system, bus driving substitutes, et cetera. And so we've already reached out to, to Delaware's H R department to, could you please, you know, let, let your good subs that you have regularly know that we would love to use them this month. So that's, that's our big thing. Um, we're looking at, again, is there significant spread? And do we have enough staff to safely monitor the kids? But, you know, I think we're at a point where certainly we would be flexible if families feel like, hey, we're going to go see grandparents and we want to self-quarantine and can we get our assignments? Absolutely.
So flexible, do you mean that the parents could come, the student could come in and get their, uh, classwork fourteen days before?
If it's to quarantine for.
And would that go, would that go against? Would that, okay, would that go against their number of days tar- missed?
Um, I can't answer that right now. I know we allow them to do free-range absences anyway, but, and if they're put into quarantine, it counts as a medical one and it doesn't, but I can't answer that question. I have to work into that a little bit.
Well.
What we're able to do. So it's not like Angie's sitting there making a decision. It's just how we're able to put that.
I'm not, I'm not hyper-conscious of COVID, but I did review the Ohio Department of Health's, uh, last eight years of flu-like symptoms, and they skyrocket. Uh, five of the last eight years skyrocket from Thanksgiving to the second week in January. So I would say we'll probably have the same thing this year, but instead of it being claimed to be the flu or something, it'll kick in all the precautions for COVID. And I just don't want to see something happen in January that could have been prevented in December.
Again, I, I share my personal thing, and so all the firm, and I'm really going to share with the rest of people differently. I, from my end, I, I still maintain the game, because they, that's what they decide as a family. They don't want to take away that school as an option for families that can have to work.
How, how disruptive would it be to, to go from in-person to distance for the students?
Um, to make everybody go to distance?
Yeah, for their education.
And, and Jen, certainly when she comes up, can speak to that a little bit more, but, um, you know, we have given the teachers resources and, and talked with the principals about, obviously reminding them that things have heated up, to be prepared, we need to make that switch. Um, I'm not sure if we got the last of our Chrome books in. I know there was a huge delay and shortage coming from where we're good now. Um, everybody trying to get more and, and all of the backlog with the supply chain in, in China. But, um, yeah, I mean, I think we're fairly prepared. I, yes, I'm not going to say it's going to be perfect or, or necessarily the same caliber as what they're getting in person, but yes, we have talked about being prepared, we need to switch. Because again, we, we have told people, if we don't have enough subs, we're going to have to do that. So there has to be this year, this next semester, gatekeeping to that.
I think the timing too of kind of the, I don't know the right term, is the option window or whatever being open right now for folks to be able to make their choice about second semester as well is, is probably timed fairly well around your, your concerns, Doug, and, and, and letting families make that choice for themselves. I guess for me personally, and what I've seen in the data and, um, what I've observed just from my own families is that, um, you know, there isn't really a spread occurring when people are coming to school with it because of whatever it is we're doing precaution-wise, whether it's masks or what have you. Whatever we're doing seems to limit spread from occurring. Um, and I guess from my seat, my, my bigger concern is that we're going to have to shut down because of contacts from outside of the district or outside of the school operations, um, requiring people to, to sit out. That's going to limit our ability to execute. I guess I still sit of the opinion that, um, the best thing for our students that don't necessarily have a medical particular risk of some time with themselves and their family is to be in our buildings. I think even with those folks, the best situation is to have them in the buildings. I realize that's not necessarily possible right now for them, and that's a, that's a choice everybody can make. Um, but I guess I've, I feel like we're doing best by our kids if we can bring them into an environment where they can have as much normalcy as possible. Um, if, as long as we are not part of the problem in terms of the spread of, of the disease, and I guess I don't, I don't see any data or evidence or any discussion from any experts indicating that, that's happening. Just my two cents.
We did want to share, since you mentioned the window being open right now, that, um, once the governor made his last couple of press conferences, or, you know, um, we did extend that, so it was originally supposed to close on the sixteen, but we've extended it to the Sunday, so as there is a, a, a key in the state and obviously all the things happening with, with Franklin County, that folks have a little more time to take that decision. Uh, we would love a free flow back and forth all the time, but just, legitimately, it's not possible with staffing. I would love to be able to do that for folks, but we really have limited resources, and so we have to be able to start our staffing. So families, we did send an email out to all families, come now, as well as folks that the school changed, that they have until, um, this Sunday. So to make that question for certain, for everyone, so to make sure you get that as well.
Yeah, I, I saw this on the agenda and placed an email, had a conversation. Uh, I think ultimately knowing that families are provided flexibility. We have seen data from families, not only this summer, in terms of, uh, what their expectations were from us, as well as, you know, right now in November, providing those surveys out. I know that that survey remains open in terms of student choice. Uh, but right now, the overwhelming, overwhelming sense to the tune of eighty percent plus is, uh, to do what we can to remain in school. And with that, I think I would be completely, I, we all, I don't know, we all. If there was a conversation around evidence of spread in school, I think the conversation, at, at least from my perspective, would be completely different. Also hearing kind of our superintendent talk about the flexibility that families might have, uh, is an opportunity that I don't know has always existed. So thinking about kind of the uniqueness of the situation and the fact that, that district is attentive to that flexibility and providing families choices. I, I really don't know what else could be done in this moment.
I will share, um, on the survey, we have so far had, um, one hundred and fifty-four select to go from remote learning back to in-person learning, and fifty-two select the office. So just over two hundred have office or a chain out of our four thousand students. And then there is about one fifty, one fifty-four, fifty-two right now. And that is one hundred and fifty-two.
How many were remote before?
Um, it's twenty-seven.
It's, it's a little over seven hundred, they're called.
So I also hear that in your weekly meetings with the health department, your statement was, if we had evidence or had concern of this happening in school, then we would be reconvened?
No, anecdotally, I know some of the districts that are maybe getting the six foot spacing and kids are only there for time, um, they're, they're maybe gathering outside about them in the month of school. So I feel like, you know, the controlled environment that we've had, our numbers have been, as good as are better than districts that are doing a hybrid model, um, where we're able to get the good six feet apart. So again, that's, it does do the kind of things that we look at. Um, and obviously, when it's all remote, it's out of our, out of our hands and out of our control, but I do know that both communities are saying that.
Anything else on the COVID front?
I, I definitely agree that, you know, our, our goal is to try to keep the kids or, you know, the families who choose in-person, in-person as much as possible. But I, I do hope, and I know that you've given lots of warnings and, or, you know, in, in terms of communications and sending out emails and whatnot. I do hope that families, um, just with, you know, seeing how everything has been going in the community lately, knowing with holidays coming up and everything else, just kind of thinking through what they would do if we did have to go all remote. Um, kind of putting that, you know, start thinking about that Plan B, um, just so that, you know, if it happens, families, you know, have, have something that they can put in place so that they can still get to work and do what they need to do, so.
And I think, um, something that I wanted to also share, I know we've talked about this before, but I've got some questions about this. Why don't we have as many contacts as one of the other districts and different counties? So just a reminder, in Delaware County, they are looking at two masks and two barriers, or one mask and six feet apart being two barriers. They're looking for a minimum of two, of two barriers, um, for the person to not be at contact. And the other counties, Franklin, for example, unless they're six feet apart and both have masks on, they're being counted as a contact. So you may have seen the, the story about the Albany from the news, that they had to quarantine a quarter of their face pool. That's why, because if somebody gets into class, where their class is pretty much going to be quarantined. Whereas our health department is really looking at our lunchtime, those contacts at the lunch table, that's, you know, that's an area exposure. Um, you can't really opt in the back though, and, and spread kids out enough to eat where we don't have that situation. So we're doing the best we can to minimize those contacts, but certainly we know lunch is an, an area exposure. And then we have had a feed from Bayon class, because again, um, and the health department actually said, the way you're sitting and the protocols in place, they were happy to, no one had to quarantine two people from a main situation. So, uh, now just wanting to know if there may have been, just pointing out some examples, if you're thinking like, why is it different here? Or why is it different than Albany, for example, from the news? Our health department is keeping a different standard of approach there.
Well, and maybe I can share one other piece, just not only as board member, but father of a student in band and from a lunch table who had to be quarantined. I've been really impressed and thankful for the work of the teachers in terms of providing, uh, learning experience that is viable and, uh, within kind of the course of what they would be doing in their classrooms, which is rightfully so, but a difference from what we saw in the spring. So if that pivot were, uh, necessary, and, and again, I recognize all of the things that were kind of new as we were kind of learning to cope with things differently in the spring. But right now, uh, the educational experiences been provided in a remote learning environment because of contact tracing has been fantastic. Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I think our teachers have done a great job of, to Mr. Fuji's point, there's a difference in, hey, we're going to close down and go remote in three days compared to, hey, prepare for this all summer. So we're hopeful that there's been some good work done there. We've obviously seen some evidence of that. So appreciate our staff's work on that. All right, um, board members, you have an attachment on your agenda, and this was coming out with the board meeting proposed dates for twenty twenty-one. We do have our organizational meeting coming up in January, so I'd like to feedback on the dates you would like us to propose for your vote on. And we're planning on, as of now, and I, I shared this previously, with organizational and morning meeting happening on January fourteenth, we'll be back to back. We do need to have that organizational meeting by law by January fifteenth, so that kind of falls on our second Thursday, when we typically meet in the morning. And then the only deviations from our typical second Thursday morning and third Thursday evening would be if you look at June. Instead of having the morning meeting earlier, we, um, the way that month falls, Jeremy would have to have the year closed out really early in the month, and we would have had to have a special meeting most likely. So we, we're proposing moving that morning meeting to June twenty-ninth, so that you can approve the end of the year and the appropriations for the, the new year. July, we typically only do one meeting, you'll see that on there. And then if you look at December, we've followed what we've done the last couple of years, we're moving that up a little bit, holiday break. Looking at any feedback, if there's anything you would like us to change in those proposed dates for next year. And then we do this by calendar year, not by the full year, which is not as natural.
No issues here.
Tentatively, graduation is scheduled for May twenty-second, and the board meeting will be May twentieth. Is that accurate?
Andy, graduation is on the second.
Uh, hold on there, five, yeah.
It is.
So typically, we, I think we're going to do the names, though, and you approve them, um, before that.
The first meeting?
Yeah, you two, the first meeting, I might even be the last one in April, because you're approving any of those potential graduates to graduate as long as they're new criteria. So if anyone on that list does.
So it was in a situation of waiting for May twentieth to approve it? Okay, that was the reason.
Was that kind of where you went with that question?
Correct, May twentieth.
Thank you.
I got lucky.
Actually, no, that's good. We both have standards, so you take, take better attention. I talk to you every year, and that's not. All right, anything else that they've got on dates? All right. Um, next up is, we are required every year to share in regards to the Healthy Child Act, that the district of local schools' food service has followed the guidelines, amended requirements of the Healthy Child Act of two thousand ten for food, beverages, snacks, et cetera, offered for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. Again, that's a requirement that we share in our organizing, so I'm letting you know that. But along the lines, I also want to share, as many of you are aware, we continue to have free breakfasts and lunch. That is not a local initiative. We're not paying for that with local tax dollars, nor would we decide that. That's a federal initiative to provide free breakfasts and lunch for all students. So that has been approved through the end of the school year, so we continue to see that. And we'll see what they decide to do for next year. All right, I think that takes us to academics, and we're going to bring up, um, Mr. Trados from the high school, has a presentation this evening, and I know he has, has staff number twelve, follow him on his Instagram.
Hello.
Did you get the mic?
Yeah.
The other bomb.
How about it? Is that coming through? Fast. We're on. All right, smooth. All right. Well, uh, good evening. Uh, very excited for the presentation, uh, today. And I want to explain the program, um, sages and seekers that we were able to participate in this year. Uh, Suzanne Pingree, uh, is the program director from the Delaware Helpline, and she reached out to us last year. Uh, this is a program that's done in Delaware County, and it's been done, I believe, at Oland Te- or some of the Oland TNG schools, and also at Delaware High School, Delaware Hayes, and wanted us to participate. The, the objective of the program, and I'm even going to talk about this here in a moment, we're talking about our C I P goals, um, is developing empathy through the power of conversation. And what ends up happening is the helpline, they create, um, the people that run the program, they find seniors in the community, um, that want to be involved in this, and then they are synced up, they are aligned with, um, students, um, at high school age. And then basically, kind of like a pen pal type thing, except it was done in person in the past. Uh, they would meet for seven to eight weeks. Um, and they would really build a friendship, and they, um, they would have topics to go over every week and, and really bond. And, um, I was able to see that at, at Delaware, and was really, really moving to, to watch this. Um, so we were able, very lucky to be able to, to do that this year. And here in a second, um, I'll introduce Mel Akabarger. It was in her class, her sociology class, that we did it. And actually, um, we had the, uh, the final meeting, uh, today, and, and Angie was able to, to be there, and it went, uh, it went really well. Um, so, um, in the past, these meetings, once again, have been in person, but obviously with everything this year, um, it was done different. And, uh, this is actually addressed in, in Suzanne, um, who oversees the entire program, uh, in her email to me last week, and I just want to read that to you just real fast. Um, I checked in with her last week to see how things were going. She said, things are going great with the program. The seniors, which are called the sages, and the students, which are the seekers, are connecting really well with each other, even though they are meeting virtually. Thanks to Mel for being flexible and trying this new format. It has allowed us to connect seniors who may otherwise be feeling very isolated and lonely, especially during the current time of COVID. The program is giving both generations a great connection to the community. And, um, I think that was really the neat thing. You could almost make an argument about which group, um, did it help more, which group did it mean more to? And, uh, and was really neat. So I'm going to let, uh, Mel now kind of talk about it from, uh, from her end and, and what she saw.
All right, uh, first of all, it was such an honor to be a part of this program. Um, I will say initially, the reaction, um, from my students, because they didn't necessarily have a choice, they were in my first period sociology class. And so, um, their reaction was, okay, so seven forty in the morning, you want us to be on a Zoom call, talking to old people we don't know, um, was their reaction. And I appreciate the honesty. Um, but that changed really fast. Um, the tributes that they did, so they had to write an essay too, so you throw that into the mix, and yeah. Um, but as they went through and got to know their sage and have those conversations every week, um, it was just an awesome experience to watch, um, to watch the bonding, um, the tears that was shed the last two weeks with the tributes. Um, and they're all wanting to stay in touch with, with each other, um, referring to each other as like a grandparent or a grandchild. Um, it just would, went way above what I expected it to be like. Um, we would love to have had a sage and a seeker come, um, this evening, but since we can't, um, I have an email from a sage, and this was actually very early on. Um, they did like a speed dating round where they got to pair up and ask questions with the sages and try to, you know, then choose somebody that they felt like they had something in common with. Um, and so right afterwards, um, and like Andy said, both sides really gained, um, a lot from this experience. It was not one-sided at all. So this is an email we received from one of, um, the sages. Um, first of all, what a wonderful group of humans we have in this group of sages and seekers. Your students are amazing and thoughtful learners. While I certainly didn't expect this to happen, because as a sage, I expect it to affect students, one of your students asked me a question today about how I wanted to use my doctorate degree and education on which I am working. First, I have to tell you that Derek was the first person who ever asked me that. In preparation for graduation, I have actively been applying for positions and haven't had much response. I believe your student's question is a game changer to me. This conversation then prompted me to create an elevator speech that I will include in my C V and in my cover letters for applications. In my mind, this was a pretty remarkable outcome from a three-minute conversation, and I am so grateful for the interaction and the perspective of someone not in my professional development circle. At any rate, I really want to share this with you and to demonstrate that this program really is a mutually beneficial program, and I'm happy to be a part of it. So that was early on. So obviously, that was a very neat email to get. Um, and then the tributes that the kids wrote at the end, um, they weren't like biographies, they were just supposed to, you know, thank the person for the advice and information that they shared and how, um, they connected with them and the importance of their relationship. Um, so I'm going to read part of one, um, from one of our students. Um, dear Pam, I would like to start off by saying thank you for making this experience so enjoyable each and every week. I am forever grateful that I was able to hear about your triumphs in life as well as your struggles. You have helped me realize that the best lives are never cookie cutter. Normally, when you ask someone about their proudest moment, they skip to the ending where everything worked out. When I ask you, you were proud of the whole journey, even the hard parts. When I ask you, you were proud of the whole journey, even the hard parts, and that was something I always admired each week. It seemed like your life was one long movie, and nothing about it was a mundane script. It has helped me to worry less and accept things as they are. You told me one of the hardest things to do is love yourself. I remember listening to you tell me not to let others control my happiness, which stuck with me, as it is something I have done my whole life. Now I can think of you every time I do something for me without a care in the world for someone's input. Although I am sad our Zoom calls each week are over, I am full of blissful memories that I cannot thank you enough for. So thank you for explaining to me the whimsical, magical feeling that your life was, and I will always look for where the fairies danced in the sunrise, just as you did as a child. Love, Grace." So I think that those two just show like, and I mean, all of the tributes were like this, they were just so meaningful, and like I said, some of them were tear jerkers. But this whole thing was so rewarding to be a part of, and I'm thankful for that opportunity.
And it really was, to be able to hear these, the tributes, the speeches that the students read, you know, we get so caught up, I think, in, you know, how our students are doing content-wise, are they learning the information, how they're doing the AP test, and all those different things. And when you really talk about, you know, students growing and just that overall experience, and this was, this was really tremendous. And one thing we just found out, that in the spring, only one, only one high school is going to be able to do the sages and seekers program second semester in the spring, and that would be Big One at High School. And a large part of that was because of Mel and just how well the class went. So we're really excited to be able to have that program again, and even starting to look at maybe how we could build that to affect more students.
Can I just add to that? I want to thank Mel as well. The atmosphere in that classroom was just awesome, and obviously, the kids felt safe. I mean, the amount of emotion that you saw through Zoom was just amazing, because not only were, the kids were tearing up, the sages were tearing up, and I don't know that I've seen that much emotion through a video call, but I just really tell you the depth of what they learned from it. And I was glad to be able to see a small part of it, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Well, that's the end of our presentation. If you didn't know, if anyone had any questions for myself or for Mel?
I had a question just about, you said, did they have like conversation starters each time they talked, or to kind of get things going?
Yeah, so the, I mentioned the speed dating, so the first two weeks were just asking questions, and they had questions that the helpline provided for us to give the students, and so it was just like a bunch of back and forth. And then they really just, once they chose their sage, which I kind of helped pair them up, they just had conversations on their own. They did stall out a little around like week four, and so we, you know, discussed and brainstormed some more things to talk about. But yeah, that was one of the things that the kids were worried about, like, how do I sit here on a Zoom call for 45 minutes and talk to somebody? I don't know. But they did great, and it, yeah, it really allowed it to come from the heart.
I think one of, I think what you just said is one of those things that we want our kids to be able to do, to go up to anybody and have a conversation and have an authentic conversation. So, I mean, that's awesome.
Yeah, congratulations on being the one high school that has that opportunity moving forward. I was not attempting to be rude, I was trying to find the profile of a graduate here in this whole stack of stuff, because it seems to me that communication, collaboration, connecting, empathy was the word that Mr. Jados used, not just with the sociology class, but I wonder where that kind of line is for all of our students as kind of connection has become a different thing right now. So to the extent that we can continue to foster those types of things at the high school, really exciting. Thank you.
Chair, looking at what's on your end? Okay, whatever says, Sarah. All right, thank you. Done?
Okay, well, then I'm going to just go into our continuous improvement plan, and you'll actually see a connection here from the, from our previous presentation. So our first goal revolves around, once again, revolves around empathy, that by the end of the 2020, or this school year, 2020, 2021, our students understand that the definition and concepts of empathy will increase. And one thing that we found is so many times, even high school students are still getting confused between empathy and sympathy. And so obviously, step one is to make sure they understand the concept, they understand what empathy means, and then the second part of that will be obviously to build on that and understand why that's, you know, such a positive. And we've got, you know, as we did all our work on careers the previous two years, and obviously we're still working on that, is how much that employers want to see people that they hire and applicants that also understand empathy, and we'll go ahead and demonstrate that in the workplace. So, so that's, and we're going to use the Panorama Survey, we're really excited about that, that's going to give us all kinds of information and then get some good information from that district-wide, but we'll be able to monitor if students are understanding that by giving a variation of the same question twice, and then also, of course, like at the end of the year. And then our second goal, we've talked a lot about with our, with our staff and our teachers, our priority standards. And it's always been important, but even now with, with the possibility of us having to go online at any time, which we talked about a little bit earlier, so priority standards are really basic, that what four to six things in a semester do your students have to know? What do they have to learn and master to be able to move on to the second semester, be able to move on to that next course, be able to build? So we've really had a lot of good conversations that teachers have, as far as kind of debating a little bit, and, well, no, this one's more important, well, why? Because you have to have this, or you can't get here. So I think really having our teachers examine that has been productive, especially the teachers that teach, more than one teacher teaches a course, they're great conversations there. And it really just helps when something happens, as far as if our years cut shorter, we do go, you know, to remote, what's priority? Because we are not, and it took our teachers a little bit of time to understand that, but we, we're not going to be able to teach 100% what we did in person if we go remote. So what do we have to make sure that we teach? And once again, what do we have to make sure our students master? So that, that will help us, that will help us there on those two things. So those are our two goals that for this year, that Big One at High School is going to focus on. Any questions? Okay?
And Jen has a quick update for you on, I believe, a couple of the agenda items here in academics.
Good evening, and I'm actually not going to let Mr. Jados get too far, I'm going to bring him right back up for you in a minute. There are two items later in the agenda for approval, and one of them, not going to spend a lot of time on, because I know Ms. Blumer and Ms. Servant spent some time last month, on the new class of 2023 graduation requirements. The piece for the approval is the seals. If you remember, students will have to get two seals to graduate. One, one needs to be a state seal, and on the back of the sheet I gave you, you can see the state ones with an asterisk, and then we had to propose three local seals. We were told what the local seals were, we had to come up with the requirements for them. So the local seals are community service, fine and performing arts, and student engagement. And again, we had to just come up with the requirements, and we did not create these requirements in a vacuum, we used a pool of, a peer group that I'm in, as well as Ms. Servant, and pulled from other districts, we're all doing something fairly similar. So for the community service, a student completing 40 hours, the fine and performing arts must earn two high school credits, and then the student engagement being in four extracurriculars. And all of these are by January 1st of their senior year, because at that point, we need to start looking on who's in danger of possibly not graduating and coming up with some, some opportunities for them to earn one of these seals before the end of the year. Questions on that piece? Excellent, those two ladies must have done a great job then, and I'm going to bring Mr. Jados back up. There is also later in the agenda, six curricular change proposals, additions at the high school. Do not be fooled, these are not staff adds, there's no bodies being added. Sometimes when you say course adds, it seems like we're hiring somebody we are not. These are proposals to add different types of courses, and they actually come directly from the teachers. So I'm going to let Mr. Jados talk about that process a little bit, and then what these six courses are.
Fantastic, he's coming up. There is one that's an ad, but it's a career center ad, just a reminder, and we've talked to you about this last week, looking at that introduction to engineering design would be a career center course that would be offered on our campus with their staff member, but the rest are with our current positions.
And the really exciting thing about that is that staff member, which they currently do now, they will still teach at least three courses, or three periods to the middle school, and then will teach two at the high school. So I think that's going to be a great kind of feeder system for us, transition for those students to go through. So we do have a process that we follow for the new courses, so the teachers fill out a form to basically apply for the, for us to have a new course, and we make sure that they understand that if I'm the one that, you know, fills out the paperwork, that does not mean I will teach the course. So that's step one. Step two is it goes through the department, the department chair is part of that conversation. Then we also have a discussion with it at our PAC meeting, so our teacher leaders then will discuss that as well. We met with, our admin team met with it, or met over this, or met on this three weeks ago, and then the admin and the counseling team also met. So we probably have had four to five meetings about these courses to kind of really understand, and still, if we do have an opportunity, if the, if the board approves this, we still have multiple steps, because one thing that we'll do is it's going to kind of depend on the students. If the students want to take the course, or if students don't want to take the course, and we've had that before, we thought, boy, they're going to really love this one, and then nobody signs up for it, so we don't offer it. And so that gives us a lot of opportunity, and also when we start to look, there might be a decision that we make that, hey, we just can't, with the needs that we have right now, with our, with our staff, we just can't facilitate this course right now, because sometimes what happens is, when we give those numbers, we can see it's a singleton course, so it's only going to be offered once, and then when, anytime you have those, they put certain pressure on the schedule, and a lot of times what happens too is, students that sign up for it usually conflict out. So you want to have a much larger number sign up, because usually if it's just one period, there's something else typically that they want that's already offered. So we look at all those different things, but we do feel that, you know, I know the tenure plan was, was shared, you know, a lot of these, at least two of these courses obviously has some engineering ties. Once again, those 21st century skills that we want to, do want to have with the courses, so the, the six courses that we have, the STEM physics, we have a leadership class, fibers, wire, and specialty clays is obviously an art class. The honors global studies, we're actually one of the few schools in the area that does not offer a freshman honors social studies class, a world history class. So we're excited about that, and especially since we have approximately 75 students typically that then take either AP or a college credit plus class their sophomore year, so we really think this will give them an option to, to further prepare them. Economics is a college credit plus class, and then intro to engineering design, which we discussed, which was the back course. So those are the six courses that we're, we're proposing to possibly have for, for next school year.
Any questions for him on corsets?
Thank you.
See, that takes us to Mr. Swartz, who has our monthly construction update, and I believe has already given you some handouts for that.
Good evening. I realize I'm probably closer to being a sage than a seeker, so I just wanted to point that out to the committee, the board members, if that wasn't self-evident, because my gray hairs aren't showing. So again, wanted to walk through very quickly, I'm going to do a little bit different approach to the three documentaries you see. We want to first apologize for just setting on it today, had them for a few days and completely forgot the email, so apologize for that. So the monthly update, take a step back, there was a facilities committee meeting, just as a reminder, that's a board committee meeting. So I know Ms. Leana and Mr. Doug there were there, and we went through with that committee. I'm going to highlight a few things we talked about with them, which are on this three, three panel graphic we have in front of you. Again, in terms of site worth and athletics, what's exciting to know is we're actually starting, putting in footers and foundations, we're finally starting some construction that is evident to the human eye, not buried underground, not utilities, not groundwork. We've started doing the initial relative football stadium, so to speak, and the concession building, just the beginning of that. In terms of the elementary and central energy plant, obviously the elementary is done, but we're still working through what's called punch work. So things that were either put in, that we found some challenges with, that they need to rework, or work work that we added as we were nearing, moving in, all of that we're trying to wrap up here through winter break, is the goal at this time. One thing I will point out, you'll see there under elementary and central energy plant, what's coming in December. This is more of an FYI, this campus, as you might recall, is a central energy plant, and this is one of those fun facts, the superintendent was also when I bring these up, we have what's called a cooling tower. So unlike most our schools, where they're smaller in nature, you have the ability, hey, it's a warm day in February, let's turn the AC on. This campus does not have that capability, because we have a cooling tower. So once we drain that, that tower for the winter, you've lost your ability to do artificial, if you will, cooling. Instead, we have to bring in outside air and whatnot. So I bring that up, I see the principal for Prairie Run here, we'll just have to work a little bit more to manage. Very traditional in larger buildings, larger campuses, but it's just something to point out in case you get calls in February, if we have a strange warm day, we can't just turn the air on, we have to rely on mother nature to kind of cool the building. And then the high school, the exciting project that's coming out of the ground, I shared a couple of percentages. Again, this form's done by the CM, so they're slightly different in hands from what I shared with the committee just two days ago, but approximately 90, 95% of the building mass is in place, that's the building volume, if you will. And of that, roughly 60, 50 to 60% is under roof or temporarily enclosed. What's important there is that's our next critical milestone, being able to work inside that building, starting to put up walls, which we're doing in the classroom wings, et cetera, adding temporary heat, all that is occurring, and that's critical to moving through the winter here. Pleased with where we are on that, and if all goes to plan, we'll be at 100% in January, and should be well on our way to opening, as we've talked about, with kids, January of '22. So I'm going to stop there for a second. Any questions on kind of where we're at with new, the new school construction projects? Okay. The other two documents that you see every month, again, one of them is the multi-page document, it is where we stand as a district on use of our contingency fund and the changes against that fund. And then the single page is where the CM is with approval of the district and the architect, use of their contingency. I'm going to go more big picture on both of those and just point out, on both of them, you'll see, we had a little bit of challenge for a while there, getting things approved, moving them from potential to approved. You'll see we're getting a lot more of the change orders approved, you see them are gray in the case of the multi-page document that's for the district. And the same in terms of, it's not grayed out, but in terms of the CM, as you'll see under, they have something called an estimate, or there's an A column, which means approved. So the bulk of the CMs have been approved, and a much larger percentage of ours over the last month or two have moved to the approved and executed column. Also want to share on ours, the three-page document, there's six pages total, front and back. You'll notice there's been a change, there's a lot of data on there, but there's a column that assigns where the change or the bulletin, what are we looking to change, is associated with. You'll start to see very logically, we've moved from the elementary in the site now to the high schools, that's a natural progression, you're going to start to, eventually, we should be spending very little, anything on the elementary, and so we'll start seeing that change as well. Other than that, I know the comments on the two financial reports, any questions on that? Okay, well, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, Jen. All right, I am done, unless you have anything else for me?
Then we're good to go.
Thank you.
I'll bring us to item seven, recognitions, and I believe Mr. Crowell is our first one for the evening.
Grace Weber. Grace Weber is a senior at Big One at High School. Her parents are Lee Weber and Amy Moore. She has a sister Carolyn, who is a freshman, and a big brother, her brother Ben is in the sixth grade. Grace has accomplished so much during her four years of high school, but what is most impressive is what she has accomplished in the last few months. She has started three new clubs at Big One at High School. The latest club is Aquilia Amigos?
Aquila Amigos?
I'm close, though. Which stands, it's been many years since I took Spanish, which stands for America, or Eagle Friends, who are, which is comprised of higher-level Spanish students who tutor English language learners. This club benefits all students involved, since the tutors are able to improve their Spanish, and the ELL students get assistance with their schoolwork. Did you come up with that idea?
Yes.
That's a good idea, actually. Grace has performed extremely well academically, she carries a 4.3 GPA, and is also a member of NHS. She has also been involved in multiple extracurricular activities. These include being the treasurer of the Spanish club for all four years, a member of the varsity track team for her entire career, and a member of the, thank goodness I'm female cohort through the Delaware County Helpline. She is currently in the first class to be is currently in the first class to become a Level III Global Scholar. How many hours a night do you sleep?
Not enough.
Not enough. She's not sure what college or university she will attend, but she knows she will be studying biology. Her dream career is to become a bio-mathematician, so she can work in the marine biology field to model ecosystems. And there are some comments from staff made regarding to Grace. One is, I am very impressed by Grace's determination and dedication to academic success in AP Calculus. Her work is impeccable, her attitude, explority, very good, and her maturity beyond her years. Would an excellent choice for Student of the Month. Another comment is, Grace Weber is an exceptional young woman, whose academic performance is always superior. Grace thinks outside the box. Her unique ability to use high-level thinking skills places her among an elite group of students in her age. Grace is very creative and loves to learn. Another comment, Grace Weber is stellar student, who has started many clubs designed to reach out to a wide variety of students. She took the initiative to start a club designed to help ELL students, advanced Spanish students, sign up to work with the students. And another comment, you've got a lot of comments. A word that describes Grace is passionate. I believe that her willingness to stand up for her convictions, even when they may not be popular, sets her apart from other students. I've watched Grace grow and become an empathetic advocate for those people who are marginalized. I believe that passion is rare for a person of her age. And she is the Student of the Month. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Are they going to do a picture for her and family?
I have a clip.
I was going to give both cameras when you're done. You should do a picture over there with your, you should take your eagle and your family with you, and put that eagle in the samener. We typically do it with a board member and not with the things, but we're a student, a student and family at the same time, so you can take your masks off for the picture.
We could Photoshop Mr. Crowell in, can't we?
Sorry.
No, I apologize. I have the pleasure of recognizing another graduating high school senior, Jonah Kildue, class of 2021. Oh, no, I have to put my glasses on. I apologize. Prairie Run Elementary School is very proud to recognize Jonah Kildue as the Student of the Month. The fourth grade, fourth grade, so you're the class of 2029. You'll graduate in the blink of an eye. 2029 is coming right up. According to your fourth-grade teachers, Jonah, you are very positive. You are dependable to always do the right thing, and you stay on task due to your orientation. Very liked by your peers. You bring the fun. Unexpected sense of humor to all situations. Jonah enjoys math, particularly multiplication and division. Your favorite book is Holes. And one of my favorite things about the book Holes is, the main character is Stanley Yelnaps, is that right?
Yeah.
His name's a palindrome, the same forwards as it is backwards. Yeah, that's one of the things I like about him. Outside of school, you enjoy spending time outdoors with your brothers Brad and Grant, who I assume are sitting next to you, where you play football and goof around. Jonah loves going on vacation to Alabama with his family, and also enjoys building Legos. Now, I got to tell you, Jonah, this part of it kind of choked me up, man. Jonah would like to thank his mom and dad, his principal, Mrs. Castillo Leon, and his teachers for their support. He wants everyone to know that he always tries his best and is honored to be the Student of the Month. Well done. Mrs. Castillo Leon says, PRA is very fortunate to have Jonah among its students. You are an excellent role model and example for your peers. Wish you all the best in the future, and have no doubt that you will accomplish great things. Congratulations, Jonah. I'm going to walk this over to you. You okay if I do that? Okay, I'll do that.
Congrats, Jonah. Just a reminder, if you want to head over there, we'll get a nice picture of you for the eagle samener. Make sure you take your eagle.
With that, I believe the streak continues of Jeremy getting to present to far less people than we're actually here before we got started.
So true. So true.
We're up to the treasure report now at item 13.
I continue to sound like a broken record when it comes to looking at the revenue side of things, due to final settlement at the end of October. Happy to share that we did receive about a week and a half ago, our final settlement, and it puts us basically right on when it comes to the property tax side of things. You will notice, most likely though, still, as we, in next month, that we will still be under what we would hope to be, because when you have something that's backed up like that, the property tax allocation or reimbursement is also property tax-related. And I would anticipate that that may be a little bit later as well. Hopefully, we will get that in December, however. So just wanted to share that, and really, everything else is kind of in line with what we have been the last couple of months. Trending slightly under in our expenditure areas, basically, you can see this month in all areas. So continue to watch that. There is always some level of fluctuation. So that may not be the ongoing trend for the entire fiscal year, but pleased with, with the exception of how under our revenue are on this report, pleased with how in the times we're in, in the way that we're looking. So any questions on the financial report?
I guess not so much on the report, but, you know, I know it's been, I wouldn't say a challenge, but I guess a concern that the time it's taken for the county to be able to turn things around again. Have they given any sense of, expect a similar performance in '21 going forward with kind of how things are, or is this kind of a one-time thing?
I'm hopeful it's a one-time thing. I had some candid conversations regarding that it was unfortunate how long it took, and how also I was fortunate to be able to say that because we did have, as I've been calling, our rainy day fund, that we, you know, it didn't cause significant problems. The way I tried to frame it, though, is, I hope that you will have things in place, because this is, this is not what we should be expecting, and it's highly out of trend for what we would generally see. And I express that hopefully this situation has been brought to light, things that need to change. And I've been told that they have a plan in place to, one, talk to their software vendor, because that was part of the issue, and two, just to make sure that they have processes in place that hopefully this does not happen again. Yeah, great question.
And you probably, well, I know you weren't the only treasurer to show your dissatisfaction in the county.
I will, I will just say, Mr. Crowell, there came a point where I think they were very glad for their benefit as well, because I, as we got closer and closer, I was, at least every other day, if not every day, I was emailing and/or calling, so.
Making friends.
The second piece, just wanted to touch on the Fair Funding Formula Plan. You may have heard that this has come up again, and just wanted to share some thoughts and comments on, partly, the plan as a whole, as well as kind of how it's looking for us. I did send out, tried to send out what I had to the board a couple of weeks ago when it did come up. So hopefully, you do have that. But what has kind of made this come up again is, currently, there is a House Bill 305 that has been being looked at, discussed. There have been committee meetings. That came out quite a while ago. And just recently here, within the last couple of weeks, a companion bill, Senate Bill 376, then, has come. They are hoping to approve this plan over the next couple of weeks before things change in the different chambers in January. And there have also been some requests to, for us to pass resolutions in support. At this point in time, Angie and I, we've both talked, and while I think we both are very supportive of the concept, and by all means, there does need to be changes in our formula from what it is, I think we both have been hesitant to put full-blown support behind it, just because the help for us is really fairly minimal. And I was just going to go through a couple of things. As I, as I thought about it, again, the, I'll just frame it this way, that the state has a hard, a hard job and a big challenge when it comes to school funding. Not only from, I would say, the price that it would take to make sure that they are providing, even from this model, to support, and I think it's been very, very apparent through this process, how very diverse in size, makeup, and types of schools there are throughout the entire state. So with that, they do have a difficult job. And I would say many of the good things about the model, again, this is just kind of one practitioner's thought, but focusing on the student funded where they are educated, I think, is a, is a good concept. And it takes out some of the ins and outs, the deductions that we're getting now. It does attempt to take into account the unique composition of many school districts in Ohio, and look at what is a cost per pupil or student in those areas. And what I have seen also of the model, it is appearing to be a much more understandable way and concept of how it's done. I will caution all of us, though, that history would say that we don't always get things like this fully funded, and I guess that would be a concern of mine. But the model that was, has been sent out, it would show that we would potentially get about a quarter of a million dollars, 250-some thousand at full funding. And that full funding, if done, is a phase and period of six years. So that is obviously a concern for me. The other thing that also, what has been discussed is potentially the student wellness and success dollars are included in the concept. So when we look at that, this year, we're getting about 202,000 for that. If we do consider that going away, it reduces down to about 50,000 would be our potential gain. And then, at this point, I'm still somewhat unclear of different categorical and outside that base model, such as economically disadvantaged students, how those would be handled, students with special needs, gifted, English language learning, and then our transportation. It's still unclear to me exactly how those are handled. So I guess all that to say, if you have heard other peers approving resolutions or signing on in full support, those are some of the reasons that Angie and I have talked about, that at least at this point in time, that would be our thoughts, is kind of, I'm definitely not opposed to it. I think there are a lot of good things to it, but it also, it pretty much flat-funds us at this point in time, so.
If I could add, something that was disheartening to me, is that Jeremy did a great job of summarizing our discussion. We also talked about the emphasis on our wealth, again, in this formula, and it drops our share even more from the state. And so when we see neighboring districts getting millions of dollars, and you'll start to hear these things, and we're flat-funded, this is yet another challenge for us, because we are going to have to go out and ask our community for more money. And they're not going to understand, well, why do you need more money? Because this district just got another 15 million, and this district just got five more million, and we're not under this formula. So certainly, I'm happy for them if that happens. But just disheartened that, once again, we're kind of the middle child there that doesn't get any, any help under this formula compared to where we are now. And I think if anything, it's going to make our communication efforts on future levy requests that much more challenging. So that's a concern. We're not, we talked, we're not opposed to it, because there are some good things, but we don't necessarily want to go out and endorse it, because it doesn't really help us. Certainly, wanted to throw that out to you all, if you feel differently, and you want a resolution to approve, but that's why we're not recommending one at this time.
Not overly eager to want to resolve something that's going to give us 50 grand. And I guess I would just go on to add personally, that for me, this is just another example that proven time and time again, that if you're waiting for the government to save you, you're going to be waiting a long time. So it's going to be up to us to figure out how we want to do this, and what do we want for our community, because we're not going to get any help from the state.
How many times is the Fair Funding Model being considered?
If we're counting, I can't remember what the one was before, Mr. Fuji, but there was one before 305. So I believe this would be the third time.
And out of those three times, what substantial changes have been made to the funding model currently?
Yeah, to the current funding model that is in place now. During that time period, if you go back to House Bill 166, which is the budget bill, it froze our funding at fiscal year 19 levels, which actually, for us, because we're a guaranteed district, is actually back to fiscal year 17 numbers. And there have been no changes really to it. We did get, in the last by annum, which does help us, enrollment growth. So that was part of kind of an add-on, you could say, to this formula, as well as they're flowing through the formula, at least in the payment side, they're showing the student wellness and success, but that's not really part of the funding formula.
Yeah, and I apologize. I didn't mean that question to be one that, like a stump-chump moment, or like a blue, it was really maybe to the board president's point of, after three times, it only kind of being, in theory, held harmless, but in reality, kind of taking a step backwards and frozen, it seems counterintuitive to think about a resolution to support.
If you had an opportunity to look at the simulations that Jeremy set out, this did come about from a work group. So certainly respect the work they've done. Districts that are much more suburban than we are, districts that are much more urban than we are, we got an opportunity to hear some of them. Jeremy and I were on two different, a webinar and then a call. And, you know, I see their districts benefiting a lot more, and I think the work they've put in has been great. But this is, yet again, not a formula that helps a district like ours. And we are, as you look at the percentages on there, what they're willing to give us, we're an anomaly. So that makes it hard, because we don't have those large voices advocating for the type of funding model that we need.
So with that, that is, that's all I had for tonight, at least in this session.
All right. Thank you very much. That brings us to item nine, Select Board Policies. And this is the first reading of a handful of policies here, 1530, Evaluation of Principals and Other Administrators, 2270, Religion in the Curriculum, 2464, Gifted Education Identification, 3120.05, Employment of Personnel in Summer School and Adult Education Programs, 4162, Drug and Alcohol Testing of CDL, License Holders and Other Employees Who Perform Safety Sensitive Functions, and 6107, Authorization to Accept and Distribute Electronic Records and to Use Electronic Signatures. And Mark, I see you've come up to the podium, so you probably And Mark, I see you've come up to the podium, so you probably have some thoughts or comments on the source of these proposed changes.
Yeah, just to give you a quick update on things, first of all, there are a large number of policies that have come to us from the old, a lot of things have been delayed because of all the pandemics, so that was including the spring of last year going into the fall of this year. And so the policies you'll see tonight are just a, a part of several policies. We know that some of these are, some are basic, simple policies to be able to, to work through, others might take a little bit of time over the next couple of months. They're, they're not urgent items that have to be approved immediately, like what Title Nine was before, but just wanted to kind of make sure that we are up to date and, and follow in all regulations. So just a very quick summary of each one. 1530, Evaluation of Principles essentially just removes the student growth portion of that policy that you'll see there under 1530, towards the end of that, that policy there. Just noting that they're removing the student growth requirements, because under, this year, they've removed student growth part of it, but also because of what's coming with OTEST 2.0, that that is going to be removed from the evaluations. It's actually all folded into the total rubric, so to speak, for, for moving forward here with OTEST 2.0.
And, and forgive me, I'm sorry for interrupting. We have, we have chosen not to do that yet, is that correct?
Correct. Yeah, we delayed the OTEST 2.0 for this year. We are implementing just the OTEST 1.0 model, which the state has waived all the student growth portion of that, so it's just the rubric that's being used this year for the observations, for the full evaluation.
And I've only heard of a handful of districts in central Ohio that have moved to the 2.0, most of them.
Most have kind of said, hey, let's take care of all the pandemic response before we jump on something new. Under Policy 2270, Religion in the Curriculum, that notes in addition there, previously, students did not have the ability to exercise expression of their religion, except for lunch periods and other limited, limited times, non-instructional time periods. This adds in language to essentially say students cannot be prohibited from engaging in religious expression and the completion of homework, artwork, or other written or oral assignments. It essentially says that those assignments will be graded based off of the same manner as any other assignments, that it has enough, the student can't be graded based off of the agreements or disagreement with what they are using as their expression of, of religious freedom. Under Policy 2464, the Gifted Education, essentially, the only change here is just adding in that students have the right to withdraw from services. Believe it or not, that wasn't in the policy before, even though we had the ability for students to, to essentially opt out of the services for Gifted Ed. This is just updating that to meet those gifted standards, to make sure that it is noting there the ability for a student or a family to withdraw from the gifted programs. Under 3120.05, the Employment of Personnel in Summer School, the key piece here is just noting that student, or that the employer cannot pay someone, so they have to provide their licensure before they get paid. And, and again, this was part of the, some of the changes that, that happened last year. Jeremy's really up to speed on this, because treasurers have, over the last three to four years, have continued to have more and more stringencies on making sure that whoever's being paid, that does have that proper licensure. This is essentially just putting it into the policy now, to make sure that that is up to speed on, on those regulations. And then 4162, just noting drug and alcohol testing. This aligns with a lot of the federal regulations, mainly with notification. So if a driver has to have a drug or alcohol test, whether that's a random test, or whether that is due to an accident, this is all about the notification of those test results to the driver, just the preparation of all those notification results, the time limitations, seventy-two hours notice, those kind of pieces that are all in there that you'll see, that that's the main piece of all this, is all about the drug and alcohol testing regulations, making sure it's, it's aligned to all the federal requirements. And then I think the last one, Jeremy, I'll pass over to you, the 6107 is on the authorization to accept and distribute electronic records and to use electronic signatures. You worked on that one there?
Yeah, honestly, there was not too much that changed for this. There was, basically what was done is they shifted around a couple of the different items. So I believe it was the all-district staff, so the second paragraph was originally at the bottom, and it was moved up underneath. And then the last sentence of the first paragraph, the superintendent, again, was in the first part of, of that paragraph, and was moved down to the second. So the substance is very unchanged.
Any questions? This is the first reading, so again, this will, if you have any questions between now and the next meeting that this will be on for your approval, please let me know.
I actually, I, I'll contact you later, but I will have a question in reference to the CDL.
Sure.
And the conversation around when a bus accident occurs and what that process looks like.
Yes, absolutely.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Item 10, Board Members' Items of Interest. Jake, you want to bat leadoff?
Thank you guys for having me tonight. Mr. Jadus and I sat down earlier in the week and came up with a pretty good list of things that happened in the last month, and we're hoping will turn out good in the future. Since the last meeting, fall sports have finished up. Everyone got to finish their season, they're very grateful for that, very excited about that. And in the library upstairs in the school, we have pictures of the, what the new school will look like. So that's very exciting, even for me, but more exciting for the freshmen and juniors. And drama, the drama program is finishing up video production with fourteen sketches that were written, directed, acted, and produced by students, because they can't have a show this winter, so they're excited for that. But looking forward, they're hoping to have three productions in the spring, one each week after another, and this is a cool idea, I thought, in the summer. They're planning to have a production, and they're going to invite students from the class of 2020 that missed out on their spring production this year to be in that one. Also looking forward, I've been listening to Mr. Dewine recently, we're hopeful winter sports will pan out. Looking good right now, practices have been going on, scrimmages have been, I know for basketball at least, so that's exciting. And in school, Ms. Stukesbury met with the fire marshal to discuss what we could do to decorate for winter homecoming, because students seem the days are all the same, so we wanted to spice up something in the school, decorate for the winter or something, and boost morale while following the rules from the fire department. That's all I got, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Sherry.
I don't have anything to add.
Mr. Crowell?
I'll expedite the meeting.
Steve, how about yourself?
I do have some things, so I'm going to take the opportunity to not expedite the meeting. Last week, I'm appreciative for the district leadership team that chaired the ten-year district work plan. I commend those that put in and provided input on the four goals of improving academic achievement, promoting whole-child development, optimizing capital, human resource, and demonstrating financial responsibility. Really, my comment in this moment is that I'm looking forward to engaging with this board in discussion on those goals and those priorities moving forward. A meeting is set for, as I understand right now, December fifteenth, and I can literally not imagine something better to end the year than start it a year. So the idea that we're going to turn the page into 2021 is very exciting. Thanks to the superintendent and her team. Additionally, one week from today is Thanksgiving. Second note of gratitude I have is that we have said for many times now, as the school goes, so goes the community, and we're actually seeing that kind of play out. I'm grateful to the teachers, the coaches, the band, choir, and drama folks, who have all sought to do something differently this year. And really, quite honestly, it's a note of thanks that they've boldly chosen to return to school as essential employees. I'm thankful to our community who attended 2020 graduation in more masks, in order to see kids receive something that they worked for and earned. I'm thankful for the support of the community who attended those fall sporting events in masks, and followed rules that we aren't necessarily accustomed to following, but did so so that they could see their students be successful. I continue to be thankful for this community that supports this school district, and the school district that in turn supports this community. And really, just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Steve.
Hi, this, I guess, took place back in October. I attended the Big Walnut Bridges Steering Committee meeting, and I guess just wanted to make sure that members of our community and members of this board knew the kind of things that that committee has been doing since we started last February, was it?
Right before the pandemic.
Since last February, Big Walnut Bridges has had seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred dollars in direct public support. Two-thirds of that has been gifts and kind to meet needs of people within our community, and a third of that has been in financial contributions. And one of the things that they talked about was that, as they put out needs through their channels, that the generosity of our community is amazing, in that every need is filled within twelve hours of being placed, whether it's, you know, somebody needs new shoes, or, you know, just all sorts of things that this committee has done. Because of the community's generosity, they were able to pay off the lunch account debt for all the students in our district, so all of our students started with a clean slate coming back to school. And I'd just like to thank Megan Truax and Julie Adams for their leadership of that organization, and just how much they truly have benefited the community. And then also to say, if anybody's watching this meeting, that I know that they are looking to expand that kindness to, if there's seniors in the community, they talked about, you know, with, as the winter is coming, that if somebody needs a driveway shovel, that we would probably have students, or there's others in the community who could fulfill those kind of needs, things like that. So just wanted to bring that up. And then also to thank Doug and Angie for the Facilities Committee meeting this last week. Angie touched on that a little bit. Felt like they saw kind of that review of the upcoming PI expenditures that we have for this next year. And just express my appreciation to these, this community of experts that we have, who were able to provide some insight. They brought up some items that I know Mark took down a couple of notes, that, oh, we hadn't thought of that, and just that they're willing to give their time to the district. And that one of our discussions was regarding the ELC and the repairs needed, and what the future of that building looks like. So that was one of the discussions. That's it.
Thank you. I just have a small request tonight, and so as you can imagine, things have been fairly contentious, I guess, all across the country over the last few months, and just as contentious in my inbox as well as so. So, you know, I just wanted to, to make a comment about accessibility and discussions with folks in the public. I am always willing to have a conversation or an email exchange about any issue or, or anything that is a concern for anyone in the district. But I, I'm really getting concerned with the number of anonymous emails that people are sending. You know, one of the challenges that I know from my friends that work a lot with, with children, coaches, teachers, things of that nature, that, you know, kids being able to advocate for themselves is, is such an important skill and such an important ability. And I guess it's just frustrating and concerning for me to receive anonymous emails from adults. And I'd really love to be able, for all of us, to model for our kids, how can we speak up for ourselves, state a dissenting opinion, suggest alternatives, and, and have a productive discussion. And doing that anonymously doesn't really help create a productive discussion. So I would just like to say, I'm open anytime. I'll have any discussion with anybody on any topic, but if you really want something to change, if you really want to be able to contribute to the discussion, put your name on it, and don't do it anonymously, and engage from a, a position of directness and trust, and expect that you'll receive respect from me, as I've always tried to respect and, and be respectful of anyone that has dissenting thoughts related to me, and, and I would appreciate that respect back as well. So doors always open, the inbox is always open, the phone lines are always open. Just be, be yourselves, and the more we talk about these challenging things with each other, our community, be honest with each other about the things that we're seeing, we're going to go a lot further along in terms of making it a better place that we'd all like it to be. So I'd appreciate that. Thank you. Brings us to Public Participation. The meeting of the Board of Education and Public for a Purpose of Conducting the School District's Business is not considered a public community meeting. It's a time for public participation during the meeting, as indicated in the agenda, and there's reference, criteria referenced in the agenda for those participation protocols. I don't see anybody from the community here with us tonight. Do we have anything submitted electronically for contribution?
I have not received anything.
Okay, thank you. Item 12, and 12-1. It's recommended the board approve the November 2025 year forecast and the assumptions. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Leanna. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Sherry. Jeremy?
Yeah, so I will, just a second while this fires up. Guys, actually, I gotta get both sides of this. So as the other projector is, is firing up, happy to be here tonight and be able to give you my semi-annual update on the forecast. As you will remember, that the, the forecast, I would be remiss, I would be remiss if I did not always express that the forecast is, is definitely a planning tool, and that we do put it together. It's a lot of coordination and collaboration with Angie and Mark and, and others. And it, I guess it could also be said, I know we've had this conversation, that it, it does look at what does a potential budget look over the, a, a timeframe. And so, happy to be able to go through and just give you that update. Reminder that this is done in November, and this is when we start to pull in a, a new fiscal year. So we are going out to 2025, June of 2025, and as we do that, I will just walk through some of the various things. You'll, you'll probably recognize many of these slides, and as we, as we look at our, our position, always trying to take the, the thirty-thousand-foot level, and then we'll come down into some of the details. And as you'll see here, looking at our, our revenue and expenditure, the red line being the expenditures, and the blue line being the revenue, you will note that the, we are projecting, as we have over the last several years, that the, our expenditures are increasing at a faster rate than our revenue. And you start to see that separation, and with that separation, the, the green line, which is our ending fund balance, begins to dip. So as you see there in, in 2020, well, it'd be fiscal year twenty-three, so ending in June, we do hit that line. So as we, we start to think about, and we have these conversations, our, our board work session last week, and the work session that the, the board is having, I believe, also on the fifteenth, that beginning to, or continuing to think about what is the direction of our district, and, and where do we go from here. But as part of the whole model that I am providing for your approval tonight is trying to take into account the anticipated staffing and supports that we've talked about in, in the goals last week, as well as some of the items that we've, we've always had in there as well. Obviously, COVID- Obviously, COVID has caused a fair amount of challenges, and this forecast does include many of those. We had some very robust conversations in May about what would we look like at this point in time, and I am happy to say that the picture is slightly better. And if you are following the state economy too, the state economy, at least at this point in time, as of the end of October, did appear to be doing better than had been originally expected as well. Obviously, with a resurgence in COVID, there are those concerns of what may occur. So definitely something we want to continue to watch. As we look at the ending cash balances, just to go over a couple bars that are suggestions and best practices, our district policy does talk about that we want to strive for a thirty-day balance in all of the years. As you can see there towards the end, we're not there. And GFOA, a Government Finance Officers Association, their recommendation is sixty days. Again, not to hit on the point too much, but you can see that we do start to run into some challenges that they're in fiscal year twenty-three. I wanted to build upon one of the items, though, that I talked about last week at our Board Work Session, that while we are seeing this, it's something that we have been discussing and talking about, and it's been on the horizon. So it's just now at a point that we really do need to be making decisions of where are we going as a district and what does that mean? So you'll see a couple things, the yellow descending down, just wanted to point that out to you, that the estimated year five in seventeen would have been fiscal year twenty-one, our current fiscal year. So through a lot of different decisions, a lot of hard work, you can see that what we had thought of and thought that would be has become much better. Now, part of that is, I think, anybody in my area, we try to be conservative in what we are looking at. So that's part of it. But it also has been a lot of hard work of working with our staff unions. We've talked about often how insurance has been a challenge, and while it still isn't a hundred percent where we would want it to be, we definitely have, through different agreements and being able to change to a high deductible health plan, we have started to see some fruits of savings from that. The other area I wanted to also show, though, to, again, just show that this, we've been seeing these negative balances coming, is if you look in the years, estimated four and five, as you kind of work your way down through the May forecast, those have been coming our way. And at this stage, now, again, we need to be making sure that we're looking at how we are going to proceed. And I would be remiss if I didn't also say that part of being able to keep from that negatives coming sooner, it has also come at a cost of absorbing positions, absorbing programs, different supports that we would like to still be providing, as well as not adding positions that we would have liked to have added. So it's, we've been able to kind of keep things off longer because of those multiple reasons. Real quickly, always good to kind of refocus on what are our different sources, and you can see those there. Something interesting to kind of think about, and I'll go through a couple of the other numbers, but if you just look at the green and the, I guess, kind of a light purple there of the state, that's our share of what we get from the state, both property tax allocations and our funding. And I'll provide some more context to this, but we do continue to see that state share decline, and our local share, then, as a percentage of our total revenues, has been increasing. I've broke up, then, further comments on our revenues, kind of in two different categories. In the COVID chaos that we have had, tried to, what are the stable sources that I've seen? And then we'll work back into some of the other items that are question marks and concerns. We have seen, continued to see this last year, increases in new construction. We did also see some, or are expecting, I have not gotten the official appraisal, reappraisals, as well as new construction numbers, but initially, what I've been able to find and put in here are anticipating some good gains and increases due to the new construction of both, some in our commercial base, the Inn at Walnut Creek being one of those, and the TSC over here, just a couple, and then our residential. But you will, I thought this was, we talk about how heavy our residential percentage is, and I thought that it would be somewhat interesting, then, to kind of show what that breakout is currently and what we would anticipate it to be. And you'll notice that while our public utility, we're anticipating that going down due to the depreciation, that is, then, it continues to put more onto our residential tax base. And then our commercial, for the most part, stays right in the five to six percent range. Going on to just looking at our state funding versus our local, as it was kind of talked about, as we talked about, the fair funding model, that we haven't gotten, as you can see, the yellow bars versus the reddish bar there, that we really have not seen a whole lot. And in fact, if we take the total percentage, we saw that it was twenty-one point two-nine percent. This year is what we're anticipating it to be for the fiscal year. I looked back because I was curious, and fiscal year sixteen, we were at about a twenty-four point six-four percent state share versus local was the mix. That's a three point three-five decrease over that five-year period. And then the other note of, on the side of the state funding, that we would anticipate the trend to continue, that actually our property tax allocation portion, so that's a homestead and rollback credits, increase as a percentage of our overall state as well. Looking back to fiscal year eighteen, approximately, so this is actual numbers, it was about twenty-six percent, and anticipating by fiscal year twenty-five, the total state share that is made up of property tax-related would be thirty-two percent. So again, seeing the per pupil state funding, we're seeing how that plays out. We're not seeing a whole lot of increase there. Now, looking at the operating revenues, the more challenging pieces as we look, I've provided a couple times an update on our income tax. I guess, me being an eternal optimist, I can at least say, our projections of negative four percent that we had put in place for this fiscal year, I feel somewhat comfortable that we didn't need to change that. So it could have gotten worse. But what we're looking at here, when we think about the economy, where things are at, when we try to analyze the historical trend and what we're seeing statewide versus, and local, I feel, I feel comfortable with where we're putting those numbers at this point in time. But it is a far cry from our historical trends that we've seen between seven to ten percent growth, which is very much out of the norm for many in the state.
Jeremy, excuse me. I'm sorry, when you said it could have been worse, you mean it could have been?
It could have been further negative than the negative four.
Than the four percent.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Looking at our state revenues as well, again, just, we kind of covered this a little bit earlier, but I think the, it was said very well, that I don't necessarily have an expectation that we will get a whole lot of help now or in the future from the state. So we do need to make sure that we are thinking about what we want our school district to be and, you know, how we get there. I'm going to stop right there for just a second, and are there questions on the revenue side?
Just one.
Yeah, sure.
There was a reevaluation of the real estate property tax. I know mine went up about thirteen percent. Have you got those numbers yet? Because I couldn't find them on the auditor's side.
No, we have not gotten the reappraisal number or update numbers yet. Initial estimates I've been provided, district-wide, is about ten percent. Now, it probably is more in the ten to, or twelve to thirteen percent district-wide, but we are also, CAUV or agricultural values, had an additional readjustment, and it took off probably about a two to two and a half percent of that increase.
And is any of that included in that?
It is, yeah.
At what percentage?
Which one are you asking? The reap, the update? I put in, I put in a factor of about ten percent. Because, and I did get, they aren't set numbers, but I got initial estimates from the county auditor, is where I got those from. But it's that difference between what is the reap, or the update numbers, and then we're also seeing that reduction in the agricultural values to make it about a net effect, I would anticipate about ten percent. And that is included, yes.
It's included in the revenue numbers from now?
That is correct.
Yeah, that was the question that I had, too. You had a lot of good information in the assumptions about the effect of the HB forty-nine. So basically, there was a, there's a shift from this agricultural land to now residential. We'll be paying, picking up a little bit more. But then, overall, there's a decrease, you said, was about two percent, is that?
Yeah, it's about ten million is what the decrease was. Or, I should say anticipated, because we haven't gotten the actual final numbers.
Any idea when the auditor will have those?
If history would tell us, it should be the end of this month or the beginning of December is generally when those are given.
Thank you.
Yep, sure. So as we then move into the expenditure side of things, again, just looking at the composition of our expenditures, I think I say this every year, but we are a service industry, so not surprising that people is the good majority of what we do. But looking at that yellow piece of the pie, that also is made up of some supports that we do contract for the, through the Educational Service Center. So that is the second largest piece of kind of what we do and the costs of doing business. And that does also include things that we provide supports to our students.
Jeremy?
Yeah.
I see that's at eighty-two point four-eight. It was eighty, it was at eighty-three.
It was a little above eighty-three last.
Reduction of the fifty-two percent, point fifty-two percent, the savings on maybe insurance?
It sure is, yeah. It sure is. And also, part of that, too, is it was an estimate last year. So we're always estimating the current year, but yes, that's exactly what the anticipation is. So looking at our costs, as we think about our academic and support goals for our students, we are, along with growth, anticipating to continue to see costs rise, inflation, even though interest rates are low, there's always some level of inflation as well that causes costs to rise. But also building into this, as we talked last week about staffing models, and we're in a precarious time right now in me providing this, as the Board is contemplating the district goals. But I have put in here the one-hundred-and-fifty-home staffing and support model that we talked about last week, just as a point of looking at those costs. So those are built in. And I think, Mr. Fuji, you asked a great question last week of what the May forecast had included, and I can't remember exactly the number I said, but I believe it was somewhere in the seventy to eighty percent, and that's, that's the staffing that we did have built in. So slight increases for October, looking at different supports for our students, but the majority of those were included in May. As I mentioned a little bit ago, the, I wanted to bring this snapshot up, though, as well, because there have been, there has been a lot of work by the administration and by our staff to watch costs, and you can see that, this is, again, just the expenditure side, May versus October. And Mr. Crowe, you hit it right on the head, is that as we are now, with the start of calendar year twenty-twenty-one, we will have everybody on our high deductible health plan, and it has caused a significant help to our expenditures over the forecast. But again, these have, with COVID, we have made some additional hard decisions, just not knowing in May on the staffing side, so not filling some positions, reducing, putting some of our coaches, the instructional coaches, back into the classroom to not have to add additional staff members that we had planned and needed. So we are seeing some savings and a better situation than we did in May, but it does not come without a cost to just our staffing levels. So looking at some, just things to think about, some comments in what has been included in our expenditure numbers, but we are anticipating staff and student supports. We've, as we've, while this year is a little bit of an anomaly of looking at our enrollment, we have continued to see growth. And while we don't know the exact growth that will occur last year, it is interesting to look at that if our kindergarten and preschool levels enrollment was what they are historically, we would have still seen growth. We would have seen growth of probably, you know, fifty to sixty students if our kindergarten and preschool enrollments were what they normally are. So that will cause some, it causes question marks from a enrollment and staffing side for next year, because will all of those students, plus what we normally see, be still coming? We are including those supports for students with special needs, additional student support such as some nursing, mental health. And as you all are very aware, we had a new building open this year, and looking at a new building during fiscal year, actually, I have that wrong, it should be fiscal year twenty-two part of, and then a full fiscal year twenty-three. wrong. It should be fiscal year 22 part of, and then a full fiscal year 23. And then as we continue to evaluate our building capacity needs, you'll recall that as part of the building transition plans that were discussed in November of seventeen, the Big Walnut Intermediate School becoming an elementary. So those are pieces that are also worked into both the supply side, the utilities, the best we can to put in an estimate of that. Insurance plan designs, as I mentioned earlier, have continued to, they've been a challenge in the past. I don't expect that those challenges are completely over, but I am happy to see where we have started to look this year compared to years past. But that's, I think, a piece that we need to continue to remain cognizant of and vigilant about. And so as we move in to the last, just again, looking at those cash balances, you'll see we're right there at fiscal year 23. And I think I mentioned those pieces already. So final, just in closing, some of this is recapping, but considerations and some of the uncertainties that I'm seeing. And so obviously, we are seeing homes go up. And so we know that some level of growth is going to be ongoing. Lots of different housing developments are in the works. And so need to continue to watch that, monitor that, because community growth affects multiple arenas. It does provide some additional property and income taxes. But there is also the student and staffing needs. Pardon me. You can tell that I don't get to talk this much so often. I'm not as warmed up. But also the state and local economy, it's always something we want to monitor and track. This year, I think, is especially apparent and important that we continue to follow that. Because the, we've had timing differences, as we've discussed, I know, over and over over the last couple of months. But there's those timing differences that have caused some issues. And if we see a resurgence and there is another shutdown, that's something that we'll want to look at and see how that affects us. State funding, I won't beat on the poor state too much more. But again, any new state budget causes some level of not knowing what's going to happen, whether it's good or bad for us. And as we have discussed, there is not necessarily anticipation that we're going to get a lot of help from the state. Finally, just as I've tried to mention a couple of times here, we're at that point where we have been monitoring, we've been planning, but need to make sure that we are determining that direction. And as part of our work session last week, talked about the Moody's model and that one of those was the administration and management. And so I guess part of, as I go back to thinking about that as a focus, is that matching principle between our revenues and expenditures. And just as we, as the board is discussing at their work session, beginning to think about, is that new, is that a new money levy to provide more funds? Is it looking at our team? I know we are always looking at cost areas, but is that, is that more cost cutting? Is that what the strategy is? So looking forward to that direction. So with that, that is the end of my comments. And I'm open to any questions now on the expenditure side of things or going back to the revenue if something came up.
I've got one.
Yeah, go for it.
This is built into this, correct?
A level of that, yes. As I mentioned, using the, we talked about, there were three different models and using the 150 homes of growth for students model. So yes, I did work that piece into this just as a-
This is at 150 homes.
That is correct. Other questions? Okay.
No question. I would just say thanks again for your thorough effort. I think you always paint a really clear picture of kind of what's coming up and what we're anticipating. So I appreciate the work that went into this with, I'm sure it was just you without any help from your team. But appreciate all their efforts and peace and happiness.
Just echo that from my side. Jeremy's been great to work with the last few years and just really does a nice job of making sure we're aware of the information we need to make for operational decisions. So appreciate that.
So if there aren't any other comments or questions, I'll ask Jeremy to call the roll.
All right. Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
This is on the five-year?
Yes.
No.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
And Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
And Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Item 12-2, it's recommended the board approve the following: Big Walnut High School Course Editions, Introduction to Engineering Design, Leadership for Life, Honors Global Studies One and Two, Fibers, Wire, and Specialty Clays, STEM Physics, and Introduction to Economics. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Leanna. Is there a second? Anything you want to add on the seal front?
I don't have anything. I know we did a presentation at a previous meeting and Jen also touched on it today. I'm good unless you have any additional questions.
Let's vote on seals.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Item 12-3, it's recommended the board approve the following: Big Walnut High School Course Editions, Introduction to Engineering Design, Leadership for Life, Honors Global Studies One and Two, Fibers, Wire, and Specialty Clays, STEM Physics, and Introduction to Economics. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Leanna. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Sheri. And I know we had some discussion of this one earlier. Any additional questions or thoughts before?
I just thought there were some really good options as I read through the course descriptions. I think we're doing a good job of offering some areas of interest for our students. So.
And I want to thank the high school team because it really is, Andy kind of laid out a pretty, not like they just kind of go, oh, let's offer this next year. I mean, it's a well thought out process with lots of collaboration from his staff and giving them an opportunity to propose things that maybe are passions of theirs. And we know when our staff members teach things, they're passionate about it. It's a love affair experience for kids. So appreciate the high school team's work on that.
There's nothing else? Jeremy?
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
I'd say.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
And Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Thank you, Steve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Leanna. And Mark, this is just our usual kind of update through the years.
Yep. And this is more beginning of the year, so there's a larger list there. So it's just the in lieu payments instead of providing transportation for the students, which in the end is definitely a cost savings for the district.
Two questions. This seems like a longer list than the ones before.
Yeah, this is the end of year list. And so we have more students that essentially are getting that in lieu payment because we, again, throughout the year, we'll capture different students. So it's a smaller list throughout the rest of the year. The other piece is we do have more students, as we've talked about, taking a different option, maybe in person in the district this year, just as much as we have more homeschooling. I talked about it at the FTE report meeting this year. Part of why we're flat is because we do have several students that are selecting other options for this year.
Second question. Are these students, is Big Walnut these students homeschool for enrollment purposes?
They live within our boundaries, yes.
But are they included in the 4,027 enrollment?
They would not.
Yeah.
Okay.
No.
Anything else for Mark or Jeremy?
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Item 12-5, it's recommended the board approve the following donations: $100 to Big Walnut High School Athletics donated by Urban Homes, $75 to the Middle School donated by Western Governors University, landscaping at the ELC by Myers Green Services, $400 to GRE donated by CNC Life Insurance, $800 donated to Big Walnut High School FFA from PJ's Family Restaurant, $668 to Big Walnut Food Service by Neighborhood Bridges, $352 to Big Walnut High School FFA by Big Walnut FFA alumni, and $900 to Big Walnut High School FFA from the National FFA Foundation. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Steve, I think, by here?
I'll second.
Thank you, Sheri. And thank you all for your generosity to help our district.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
And Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Item 13 is the Human Resources Report.
All right. Thank you. Just going through the list here for this evening, 13.1, noting here that what we are asking for approval this evening is to up our subpay. Right now it's $95. It's been $95 for several years. The rest of the district, or the rest of the county, I should say, right now is at 100 or more. Buckabelli recently raised theirs to $125 a day. Olentangie and Delaware are both at $100 a day. Mostly the area districts, central Ohio especially, 100 to 110, 125, depending on the year you go. So trying to be more competitive, we are seeing a lot of, again, this isn't anything new from what we reported before, but we're seeing a lot of unfilled absences this year. Now, hopefully this gets us a little more competitive. I know several that have said they love working in Big Walnut. Just talked to a few subs this week, when I'm out and about in the buildings, I try to touch base with our subs and just thank them for their work because it is huge to be able to help our community with keeping our schools open right now and certainly working through the day with our kids. So many have said, love the staff, love everything that's going on at Big Walnut. Certainly, you know, I won't compare us to other districts, but I will say that there's a lot of enjoyment in working in our schools. So always appreciate hearing that from our substitutes, always asking for feedback when I'm out and about in the buildings from them. So with that, this would be, this would put us more competitive, being even with the rest of the county or just slightly under. Buckabelli again raised theirs this year just a few weeks ago. And from here also, keep in mind when we are in an unfilled situation, we do have it in our teachers' contract, there is a certain amount of pay that they do get for covering. So we have been in a lot of situations this year where we have to have other teachers cover, using their planned time to cover for another teacher. So there is extra pay that they're entitled to because of that. I will say it takes about two or three periods of coverage for that to equal a day of a sub. And so thinking that when we have to do that, it is about two to three times subs' pay for us to have to do that. So our goal is to try to be more competitive, trying to make sure that we are keeping costs as low as possible overall. Looking at 13.2, this is a request for approval of the following academic, sorry, athletic supplemental contracts, looking into the winter here with some assistant coaches as well as going into the spring to begin preparing for some of the spring sports with our head coaches. And then under 13.3, this is a replacement position. So asking for that replacement position approval there for a custodian role. Under 13.4, this is changing an employee to an open position. Again, a replacement role there. 13.5, a requested leave of absence. And that is all within the contractual allowances. And then 13.6, finally, there is just recommending accepting the following resignations. Appreciate what Angie Snyder has contributed to our district, GRE as a secretary, as well as John Mills as a custodian at PRE. So appreciate their work and wish them the best ahead. Any questions?
I recall an all-call for a plea to the community earlier about requesting subs and folks who might be available to come in and do that. Have we seen an increase in the number of folks?
Yeah, we've seen a few from specifically our community. A lot of times when we, we try to hit that several times throughout the year, especially these last few years as it's been getting harder to find subs. This year especially is a difficult year. But we did get a couple more parents that have stepped up to help out with subbing in the schools.
And then like on, there is no such thing as an average day. I get that. What does the sub total look like?
Yeah.
If there were such a thing as an average day?
Yeah, I did run some numbers on some things, running back actually a few years. This year is an anomaly. Last year was an anomaly when you look at the fact that we left in March. So we look back even to the 1819 year, looking at overall sub usage.
1819 might be too long ago.
On average, about 15 to 20 subs throughout the entire district per day.
Per day.
That includes teaching assistance, that includes other areas, not just teaching in the classroom. Trying to get a rough idea of what does this cost to the district, the increase of $5 a day would cost us about somewhere between $12,000 and $15,000 a year is what this would equate to. So to put a number to it, that's what we looked at when we tried to look back a few years of the overall total number of teaching subs used, add the five, or multiply that by $5 and that's what we get. Yeah, sure.
Anything else for Mark?
Thank you.
Item 13-1, it's recommended the board approve to increase the substitute teacher daily rate for subbing from $95 a day to $100 a day.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I make a motion to do a unanimous consent on items 13-1 through 13-6.
There's a motion on the floor for consent for items 13-1 through 13-6. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fuji. Jeremy, when you are ready?
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Brings us to item 14, schedule the next board meeting. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is December 3rd, 7:30 a.m. right here. December 10th, 6:30 p.m. right here. And as Mr. Fuji mentioned earlier, December 15th at 3:00 p.m., we'll be having a work session talking more about strategic direction for the coming years for the district. And those will all be streamable via our website. Item 15 is executive session. It's recommended the board enter executive session to consider the employment appointment of a public employee or official. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Steve. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Leanna.
Mr. Fuji?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Crowe?
Yes.
Mrs. Dorsh?
Yes.
Mr. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Thank you, everybody. We do not anticipate coming out of executive session to take any additional action tonight. So thank you for joining us. Have a good night. Did you enjoy that financial report, Jake?